Good morning. I'm going to call out the county board supervisor to make an order. I could, Mr. Rafferty, can you get a quick prayer?
Good morning. Good morning, Father. We just thank you for allowing us to assemble once again. And Father, we just ask of God that you continue to take care of us. And Father, we just pray of God that you continue to keep your hand in the divine power over our elected officials and their families. Father, continue to give them strength and wisdom of God to lead your people. Father, continue to keep them on water cold. And Father, we just ask right now, Lord God, that you continue to bless our school system, our first responders, our nurses, our doctors, our hospitals, and our elders. And Father, we just ask of God that you continue to bless the families of their lost loved ones over the last month, continue to strengthen them, oh God. And Father, we just want to pray, continue to thank you, oh God, for keeping us safe from these severe storms, oh God. And Father, we just thank you, oh God, and the ones that had severe storms. We just pray that their response and their blessings come their way. And Father, we just pray right now for all our projects that are going on in Adams County. Continue to make ways for financial blessings to get these projects done. And Father, we just ask all in your presence in Jesus' name, amen.
Sheriff, would you like to see a play?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so Carl Will, supervisor Gray.
Yeah.
Supervisor Hudson. Supervisor Wilson.
Present.
Supervisor Gaines.
Present.
Okay. More than thirty years older. Chancery Clerk move.
Present.
Deputy Clerk without, and County Administrator.
Hey.
And I am present. First thing on the agenda, we need to approve the minutes in March 2022. It's going to get a motion.
Stop motion.
Motion by supervisor Hudson, second. Second, by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Next, we need to approve the dockets. Is there a motion? Most of my supervisor Hudson's. Second by supervisor Wilson, discussion.
He got traveling here, he has travel problems. So we need to approve the travel for him. We gonna prove it after.
It's still legal, as long as the travel is within our budget range, okay? That's our own interim policy that we have these sheets approved prior to travel. So we're still okay legally with it. Let's just make sure we do it.
Step on one. All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Next, we need to approve the monthly financial reports with Adams County Sheriff's Office. Motion by supervisor Hudson's. Second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Did you approve the financial reports of Chancery Clerk? All, take a motion. Supervisor Wilson. Second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. City government business, if any. Do you want to add anything? Senator Moore, go ahead.
I'm not supposed to introduce myself.
Please.
Okay, this is Carrie Simpson, and I'm on the recreation board. And I'm reporting about the pool and the soccer fields. We had a meeting last week. And we are going to be opening the pool Memorial Day weekend, May 30th. And the pool's going to be open until Labor Day, September the 5th. The pool will not be open on Sundays and Mondays for maintenance. We're going to start hiring lifeguards. And we're going to have six office staff with deals with concession, handing out vests, and monitoring the pool. And then we're going to have nine to 10 lifeguards that will rotate. They'll have three on, three off during their scheduled shifts. They'll also be getting swimming tests and then backing up if the pool gets really busy. They're going to need two full-time employees to operate the pool this summer. The office manager and the pool manager. And I think that's Fay and Alicia is who that's going to be. My understanding is that Alicia's getting ready to go full-time. I think sometime this month. Then we're going to also be doing lifeguard training and certification. The lawn judge is going to be doing that, that's going to be made tonight through the 17th. And we'll send out information to, you know, get people to come to get certified and recertified. So the pool will be open Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday from 1:00 to 6:00. In the morning time, they'll have lap swimming, they'll have swimming lessons. Cathedral has their swim team practice, Special Olympics have their swim practice. And then the pool's open from 1:00 to 6:00. And then on Saturdays, it's open from 11:00 to 6:00. So Tuesday through Friday, 11:00 to 6:00, Saturdays, 11:00 to 6:00. There is also going to be adult night swimming from 7:00 to 10:00. I think they just have that like once a week, maybe, I'm not sure. They will be offering swimming lessons. They're looking to get people to do sponsorships for those. It's $55 a child per week. Let me see, they're talking about getting the soccer fields up and running. I think one of the main things is the grass cutting they're worried about. They're going to, I think, submit to order some new nets. And I think Sportsnet has agreed to mark the fields so that they can start, you know, having... I think most people are just going to really be practicing there. There's not necessarily any, like, soccer league that's going to be, like, happening like they have in Vidalia. I think that is it.
So the part-time work is approved for $11,000 over the course of a year that the city agreed to reimburse us for. If she's switching to full-time, is that going to be an issue on the budget area?
I don't know. You probably have to talk to Jimmy and Fay about that. That's just my understanding that they needed another, you know, full-time person besides Fay and that since Alicia's been there, that they were going to make her full-time. But I don't know materially how that's going to be.
Could you ask Fay to come to our next board meeting on the next Monday? So we can get that bottom of that? Because there's also an issue with the amount of time that Alicia's been working for that.
Okay.
It's got to be within the budgetary requirement.
Okay.
We can't spend outside of our office.
Okay. When is?
April 18.
April 18, okay. I will let them know that. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Full-time is like for four months. In fact, uh, one more. One more, should we go back to the way we're doing?
Yeah, it's a couple of y'all have questions about the spending of that thing. So what we're going to do a little bit differently. Angie's going to have the budgets of what they're spending into us, a report at the beginning of each month, each meeting. So that'll help us burrow what we're doing, what we're supposed to do on...
I was just wondering if Angie ever gets to sleep. She seems to be great.
All right, we're going to move on to departmental reports. Whoever wants to get. Mr. Bay.
Good morning.
Good morning. How are you?
Okay, our monthly calls were from Adams County, so 693. The fire department was 45. And the police department was 1,294. Also, I was hoping to go out and find us a building. I located one at 110 and a half North Gate. We all went out and looked at it, everybody liked it. So I kind of gave it to all those houses, we looked at it, priced it, and we all wanted our information on it.
Did you give us a license?
Yes. Is that it?
Do you need one? I'll put certain mine with you. We are.
Mr. Bay, also, is it open space?
This open space? Yeah, this open space. It's the old big warehouse over there on the North Gate and the rear.
Anybody have questions?
Do we know the debt service would be on that? The debt service would be on that?
How are we even going to do the negotiations on that, Scott?
Probably a better idea to bring up what building you want to buy.
So then, second session.
Yeah, definitely.
President, let me ask a question. I understand that they need a building. I wasn't part of the conversation that Scott wasn't a part of with the city. Scott, would that have any effect on us going outside and get a building with the conversation that you and the sheriff and the mayor and the police chief had? Would that have any effect on what we trying to do with, trying to get a building?
In my mind, what we would do is get an estimate of what this would cost as far as debt service.
No, 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 no.
Build us into a budget and present a take it or leave it kind of situation. If the city wants to continue being partnered with the county, and they may not, they may think they can do it better, this is what it's going to cost.
Okay.
And that's what I'm, that's what I'm...
All right.
So, and I'm not the, no, no, I'm not the finance person that's Angie, but I'm guesstimating about 1,500. Maybe about 20,000 a year, debt service, give or take. That's an overestimate, but 20 grand a year. So it shouldn't impact the budget in a materially substantial way. 10,000 on a $600,000 budget, or I'm sorry, 20,000 on a $600,000 budget, 10,000 a piece. So if you could take 20,000 and put that into your budget and get that over to us, we can present it to the city.
We're going to discuss this in the second session.
Okay. We'll have an item in. We can talk about that later.
All right, who's next?
President has a bill that came...
10 o'clock.
Good morning, what I do, though. Good morning, everybody. I got a couple of things, I charged them ahead and out of my heart, I dropped a bottle on a floodplain thing. Our floodplain information that we had on our visit from the FEMA. I think President Milton, they did send you a copy of that floodplain. You should have got a copy of that email on that. It was back in the table where, yeah, you puzzled just like me. But anyway, anyway, there's some findings that we had to do. I kind of missed the deadline on it. So I'm asking the board, on our findings, we got to redo a resolution to keep us in the National Floodplain Program if the board want to remain in there. What that does is, if you don't know what that program does, it allows if you get in a damaging floodplain area, things will come in and help residents that's inside those floodplain areas in your districts. So we need to go ahead and do that resolution to remain the floodplain project that FEMA has put out.
You heard the request, Mr. Rafferty, can you get a motion?
Stop.
Motion by supervisor Hudson, second by supervisor Gaines, continue discussion.
Only discussion I have, can we get a copy of the findings and...
Yeah, they sent it to President Miltonson, he said...
You got it?
He got it. Yeah, he sent it to you.
Do you have a copy?
Uh, yes.
Well, could you get convinced to run us a copy also, all of us can have a copy?
I can do that.
Thank you.
Okay. The only thing...
When you leaked us for supervisor Gray, it's always good to have a hard copy in his box.
Yeah, I got to have a hard copy.
Yeah, all right, I got you on that. Only, pretty much the things that he kind of found are just some things I have to update my ordinances that they found we need to update. Also, we only have one G out in Adams Bottom with a propane tank not anchored down in the floodplain. So I'm going to try to make sure we give a hearing gas. This is the lady that lives right near where the flood, Robert.
Ms. Dawson.
Yeah. So her tank is not staked down, so I got to keep a hearing gas to make sure they stake that down. That's the only thing that they found on that. And I need Scott to copy the resolution that I made. Also, everybody knows where severe weather is peak season. I know the last, it's like we get a storm every week. And we were not prepared, I tell you.
Ray, do you want to go ahead and approve that resolution?
Yeah. We have some options.
Yeah, we would...
Oh, okay.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Sorry, right there. Like I said, we got severe weather, we had peak, and we want to make sure that I just stay alert. You know, we've been blessed over the last two weeks, you know, storms passing over us. But, you know, a lot of counties in the state didn't fare out too well. So we'll just change the schedule and just be prepared at any time. You know, I know a lot of times, you know, we actually exposed. It's not that we don't to, you know, cry wolf, but every time that we don't do something that hurt, then you know what happened, they will blame us anyway. So, you know, just bear with us on this, when we try to do the best thing we can, try to protect people, and also, like I say, keep people off the street, keep them out of the way because, you know, Sheriff, you know, these trees, when they fall, they fall the wrong way to, you know, they just have enormous time. We don't want nobody calling the roads, especially the county, you know, doing these storms. So don't worry about it, remain vigilant, stay safe. Also, this Thursday, April 7th, Adams County, we will be participating in a full-scale radiological exercise that the state is putting on. So if you hear code reds about a nuclear plant and our procedures, don't get alarmed. You know, I know when Ukraine, everything, people are going to start calling you guys. So just let them know we're doing the exercise for our grid stuff as part of our yearly exercise requirements for our grids. So that will take place Thursday from the hours of 2:00 p.m. until 8:00 p.m. So we'll be utilizing the downtown area, also the safe room, by the ball field. My next thing, I want to request travel for myself to attend my second class on my executive academy at the Emergency Management Institute in Edensburg, Maryland. I gave a present, I have traveled.
I do have this form here, and you heard this, well. Second by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
Also, we do have COVID testing kits for each district. Let me know if you guys need some for your constituents out there. Also, we got those in. That's all I have, any questions?
Let me ask you something about what I asked you after. I may ask you after the meeting.
Okay, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ray.
Good morning. I had a couple of things. One, one of our volunteers, Foster Mound, he's in the hospital right now, he had a couple strokes. I think one of our kids was in business that had seizures the other day. But they said he's doing pretty good. He's down in the back room. Name's John Mayfair. So, just ask everybody to keep an eye on him. Next thing, I emailed everyone last week about the state. Just kind of asking all the counties about reimbursing the volunteers for gas mileage and see if they can adopt it some kind of way, you know, with the gas prices going up. So just...
Scott, do you have a question? Would you check out there, have you checked that one?
We checked in on that. If you have a fire district that's organized, that's set up to receive money, distribute money, which we don't, you can do it through that. But counties can't pay volunteer fire departments, according to the Attorney General's opinion.
I have just questions, is there any way, well, no, I can't because they all have county because of anything, then they could get a few to call up, but they can't.
Yeah, they're not...
They're not in the county yet.
The way to do it is, you have these fire districts that are set up, you establish them, there's a process to do all that. I think we have one of them. But the one that we had was just set up for getting our fire rating down. They don't actually receive or distribute cash. But you'd have one that does, and they could contract with the counties to provide fire protection, and then that district could pay reimbursements for them. That's how the attorney, but if not, you can't do it. Can't do directly, counting to volunteer fire department.
But like there, this comes from Mike Chang, he's over the fire rate, also the commissioner. And so he's the one that kind of brought this out, and you've seen, though, for you use money from the rebate, also a fire fund in. So I'm sure if they wasn't the same one, put it out, it's something we could do.
It's...
If you like, set it up like you say.
That's the mechanism. We aren't set up where our district receives and distributes money, right? If you have that, and you can use your district, that's how they set it up. Contract with the fire district to then use that money to reimburse the fire departments who traveled, the volunteers who traveled.
More like a beat system. It's more like a beat system.
Kind of like that. Where you had your own money, or whatever, or it's not set up that way.
So, but like I said, you got to check into it with other counties or anything like it, see what's going on.
You got to check into the counties that set up like we set up. You got counties set up different, set up like he say they set up. They already set up to do that. If we not set up to do that, then we can't do it. And he just called, we called Attorney General.
I got, hold you at Attorney General's opinion, hit a database, and I pulled that. But that's the email he sent me asking to agree with a fire district to do all of that. But we're just not, that's not how our district is set up, by the way. If you wanted to do that, you certainly can go through the process of setting up fire districts, you know, and figuring out how they're going to pull money and distribute that money. There'll be, have to be a financial control for that, just like the other unit we're just already trying to get under control. But you have to, you know, financial controls like everything else. Because ultimately, y'all responsible for the money.
All right, I check into it, and I was like, I got to get you. Oh, now, I did meet with the airport, had a meeting, and they're going to be looking into getting cameras and some kind of way of alarm system out there. So, yeah, it's meeting, I think, a couple of weeks ago. So they're going to be looking into doing that also, originally.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Just as a update, 26th Cleveland Field, contacted the game clearing onto the construction site. They've also performed a lot of investigation of required and solved the poses on the site. We're projecting the contract to continue with his current rate of pages that are working that should be done with that project, get ready to grass it by the end of the month, if not the first we will make. So they have also submitted their first certification and related work they've done in the month of March. They did perform a lot of work, even though they had a lot of rain. So we're recommending if you would pay payment to Camo Construction Company in around $28,000, $20.25. And that's what the work they performed between March 7th and March 1st. I did provide a chapter for the work they've done over the month to go along with this, with that pretty much the county, that mobilization, the clearance they've done, and the amount of preservation work that they performed in that month.
Did you include your INS's fees too in that?
No, that's just their, their...
Typically, they do when you're getting paid requests, because they coincide with each other.
You heard the request, county, is there a motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion?
Yeah, if you submit, get your bill on with this bill, it'll go to bookkeeping, and then it'll get paid at the next meeting. Still, I expect the documents is...
So we, so we do this patented, this deal?
I'm just going to tell them to submit it, get a document, I'll pick it up.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
You're going to eat those, eat those in...
As far as the striking on that project, we know we award the contract to Main Line LLC, and they quickly turned around their contract information. So I have their contract and funding information. I've seen authorization of boards, boards permission to allow the board president to execute their contract, so I can submit it today.
All right, good work. So, motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
What is that, what is that project?
The striking.
SAP 01800M, that's primary bridge, foster mound, machine plant, well, it's striking on the project, maybe we get a bid opening if you want to like...
Yeah, motion by supervisor Gaines, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
As far as work orders concerned, we have not received a modified MOA from MDOT yet. So I'm going to contact them today, find out what's the holdup on that. We are about 70% of our people designing the bridge itself. So once we get done with the design, we don't want anything hindered us. So I'm going to be in contact with them today, trying to figure out why we haven't got that revised MOA yet to, so we can submit it today. At this point, we can't submit the bridge today, that MOA is not in place. So MDOT said it was illegal the last time I talked to them, so trying to see how they submitted it or when I can expect that to be submitted. So if they want to see the tools of the design, the ways of the design, even the standard today, for that from that area, we can. So right now, I'm just waiting on MDOT to do that modified MOA for that project. EWP group four, you know, lab they opening, that project with awards at Camo Construction continued on a budget increase. We have submitted that budget increase as well as the timing extension for that project to allow construction to be completed. We can only pass it, he finally got back to me on Friday, and he told us that we can go ahead and move forward while they get, go through the process of getting that approved, time extension that forces the budget increase approved. Said we have enough money to get us good waves throughout the project, except we can go ahead and move forward with everything while he's getting that paperwork completed. That was the last time I said I had them on Friday.
And I'm still getting the levers back on group four. I've gotten one opinion back, probably eighth. Send an email right now, send it to the attorney's.
And so, one of the contractors submitted back their contract and funding paper, trying to wait until they get that, they get it done before the end. We're requesting the board authorization to allow the board president to execute the contract with Camo, one of their, one of their receiver documents. You heard the request, Kelly, you're here.
So, thank. Got a motion by supervisor Hudson, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it.
So what I do is, once we get everything signed, I will be sure those are proceeding to the levers are done. And the last thing I had on this, the raise grant project, we were going to be submitting Adams County portion of the raise grant to Adams County by this Friday. So initially, we had five roads that would be included in this project, and it was about 37 miles or so. And that amount of road would be submitted to the movement, which is allowed per county for this grant is concerned. And so I'm asking, out of the five roads, which road could possibly be removed in order to get within budget of the project? We look in about anywhere between 17 and 19 miles of roadway that could fit within this project. And so we had tape roads, York Road, Main Line Road, South Palos San Road, and Divvy Road. Tape road, we had the entire length of our tape road, however, a good portion of tape road is dropped, and that road not be paved within this budget ourselves. So we were able to outline tape roads in the county line, 313 tape road, with the paved portion of that road, that's about three miles. York Road is about 4.9 miles. Main Line Road is about 1.8. And South Palos San Road is eight and a half miles. We just about 18.2 miles, but I reduced that 37 down to. Now, if we're at the, I guess, the capital of that budget, we need those four roads in, and so if there's any one of those roads that may be removed or to make sure that we fit in the budget, I'm not sure what the asphalt price would be at the time, or anything like that. But based on these 34, 70 roads, if I take, I look at roads, 17 and a half miles of road, we already just said that probably not be fit to the budget. But based on these forty-four seventy roads, if I take a little road for seventeen and a half miles of road, we already just said that probably not be fit to the budget anyway. So out of tape road, York Road, M Main Road, South Palisade, you can leave it the way it is because it fits within the budget. But I'm not sure what the price will be in the future. And I I would want to bid on something in one of those roads have been moved at that time. So if you got this, do it before we submit the application.
I can ask you a question. You take, you take out little road. Okay, were the other four roads qualified with this amount of?
Good on you. The whole four roads that are left to reduce the tape road down, we think right into the budget amount. Here. But I'm not sure what the future will hold with the rates and prices.
If you don't and you go over budget, you have to be prepared to pay the difference if you want to keep them all in there.
That's always obvious.
So you cut them, keep them to grain or be prepared to pay them.
Yeah, let's just leave those four roads to me.
Well, we'll submit for that amount and that amount is, that I'll be submitting is be three point five seven three million dollars. But three point five seven three right now.
Do you need your motion for that to go ahead and apply? You got it?
I I would have to have a um a um a resolution at some point.
Okay. Do you have a draft resolution or you want me to draw one up?
If you would, this way it is approved.
Let's go ahead and do it.
You announce so I can pay the part myself.
So you need them all to put it, sell them, say.
Yeah, motion by supervisor Dan, second by supervisor Hutch, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
That's roughly nineteen miles.
Fifteen point two miles. I have a question for you.
Uh as far as, once we get this uh approval, what we need to do, we get their contract uh back to the uh contractors that uh with the war to strike it. Uh properly, how long uh do you foresee them starting the project?
It should, it should, I know it'll be before the month. It all depends how long it takes today to give us authorization to uh move forward. So.
Probably another day.
It will be another day. So what happens is I get the um the board's president's signature, then I submit on back to today and then that's it, yes, we move forward.
Can you shoot, can you shoot me your draft application on? You have that?
For?
For the, for the rights grant.
Well, I'm 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 gonna make some revisions real quick. So I'd submit.
Yeah, that'd be perfect, just enough so I can, you know, make a resolution on it. So as is, it'll be fine.
Okay, good.
Alright.
Thank you, sir.
I appreciate you talking.
Morning, boys. First I have this ball request, two oh-nine Rainfield Road.
So.
Motion by supervisor Hutch, second by supervisor Dan, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
So far the gray I hope was shared about the issue on South U Drive. Thanks for what he can and I'm gonna work up that. Next thing I have, they live on site eighteen, the Z blank.
Question, very nice.
So.
Motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Uh have a, uh board president has a resignation letter of uh Wayne Thornton. His last day will be April the seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
In motion to accept the letter of resignation.
So.
Motion by supervisor Williams, second by supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Are you gonna advertise that spot?
Am I?
Should.
Yeah, my name's Jim Commission, I have that position having my next.
Can you have one motion? That's why I figured.
Well, that's my option.
And motion by supervisor, second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Uh next thing, Terry Floyd, her six month probation period is up. She's due her rate of six hundred fifty hour. President has it.
If you hasn't had it signed, you heard the request.
So.
Second by supervisor West, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Next thing I have is three hires of one of Devon Sim, a truck driver. Gonna pay be thirteen fifty after six months, go fourteen fifty. I like the start date to be April the sixth, twenty twenty-two.
So.
We want to do all.
I would all of them.
Yeah, you got three, so let's do that.
Okay. The next one is James Jones, truck driver, thirteen fifty, go fourteen fifty after six months. His start date will be April the third, twenty-two. The third one is Isaac King, grass garden, last labor thirteen, go fourteen. After six months, his start date will be April twentieth, twenty twenty-two.
I have a question.
Hold.
Could you tell me what Isaac King that is?
Can I what?
Which Isaac King is that?
Isaac. All out of Isaac King.
You heard the request.
I remember when you asked.
So. And motion by supervisor Dan, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion?
B M S.
That's why you were asked that, Rob.
Okay.
All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, and I'll focus Mr. Ford on a few things. Right, I have to look at, get a uh check on Keith's road. His guard rail, he's gonna give us a process, moving out temporarily repaired it with what we have in house, or he give us a new process. Take fix that bridge and the pantry, we got a problem, he gonna give us. I did, don't forget. And he's gonna check on twenty-four, twenty-eight, four, twenty-six, eight. That's all I have. Any questions?
Anybody have a question?
I got a question. I don't have a question, Rob, but uh you met with some uh some concerns since on cemetery road. And I suggested that me, you and them uh set up a meeting and just write the road. Get a copy of their concern and try to deal with it.
Yeah, just let me know when it is. I should bring it.
Yeah, I do have a couple uh uh things I need to talk to you about after the meeting.
Old Ford. Austin.
Yeah.
I probably, uh I got a lot of calls about um the ditches, maybe you can go clean up some of the ditch out of the storm. The ditches out, uh you know, I got covered with the water and grass and dust and stuff, so it's very.
Where did they at? I mean, they call where, the location?
Out, out of the range and um and then on Frank Field. I got a call out most of the areas.
Okay.
They just on the county that didn't take out the top, the green stuff in, so maybe we can get them kind of cleaned up. Exactly, that's storming.
Alright, thank you.
Uh who wants to go next? You might as well.
That's it.
Uh yeah, we're in this process of like one of the other. So we might have to stop y'all in the middle.
Sure, I I've got other things, I'm not sure.
Yeah, we got a fun meeting.
Put it on, put it on, Rob.
The first thing on the trash report. Uh last month's trash report needed to be revised, monster, any of the models was wrong, so. That just needs uh signature and correct. Uh for this month's trash report, District one had fifty bags, District two had forty-two. District three, she had eighty-three. District four had twenty-one, District five had one hundred and twenty-one.
Yeah, we, we stopped you with right. You told my assistant, my assistant wants the trash excuse.
I got a couple.
The day of rain is picking up here.
On a couple people, Mike. When y'all started riding down cemetery road, they said they got a lot of trash over there, so. Kind of ride down there and check it out.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The last thing they got, we're putting it on wood.
I got just for one month.
Yes, ma'am.
He might have been doing a bit of big stuff. But I know I got a little bit, so.
We spoke with uh Enterprise, excuse me, after our last conversation, they cannot extend uh it past October uh full payment. So we asked if they could consider till next year as we discussed and that's, that's not an option, so I just wanted to update the board on that. Uh the body cam club, what we're asking is, it's honored to say that they are free money to be used for uh equipment. We need to update our body cams. Our body cams are approximately five years old. And we would like to update our full control in the jail to do body cams, which is the body cam threes. And that this will include two uh dock stations where the body cams are loaded to recharge, one would be in jail and the actually in the sheriff's office. And that total will be twenty-eight thousand one seventy-three twenty.
We take it in the bag?
Yes.
Need a motion, uh Mr. President, some of the most taken done.
Motion by supervisor Gray, second, second by supervisor, motions, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Do they have body cams now?
Yeah, yes, sir. So we have, we purchased the body cams uh about approximately five years ago. Um they're out of warranty and we're just actually having a lot of new ones as the course. And so now there is a new, but we can't upgrade to the body cam three, but the docking station is different. So we're having to pop body cam twos and they're fixing to go out of, they're fixing to quit making them. So we're going to have to upgrade. There's, there's all other features in the newer model body cameras, but we don't have an old technology either. Um we, we purchased five of them so far, but we need to finish the rest of the apartment if we can.
Yes, ma'am.
Have you all made a purchase of the twos? Yeah, I purchased the twos already.
The twos is what we originally called five.
That's what you are, okay.
Yes, ma'am. And so now the, the threes have been out for about two years now. Um it's just, we haven't been able to upgrade to them yet, except for five, we have five new ones. And that's just because you can't buy the body cam twos anymore. But the docking station's different, so we have to make a transition all the way to the threes.
So that can give like cell phones.
Absolutely. Every, every four, five, we got five years use out of them. You think about that every day, twelve hours a day. That's a lot of use and a lot of wear and tear.
So what do we do with the old?
Uh we can see if another department wants them officially sell them. That, that is an option.
Really?
What about the trees? And the tree, you know, they don't make a tree in, I don't have really, no, no.
They use it a lot, at least. Um right now with everything that's going on with the jail, I like moving to the jail and let the jails use, as they don't shoot, yeah. It will, certain situations. So we, if you all were a little dangerous to purchase those, through those forms, I like moving to the jail.
That's an idea.
That's what I, I would ask that if y'all already had body cams at the jail. You got it?
Well, we had one for sure, but I mean, the jail is, it's even worse than the jail. Uh when you deal with people because it's so close border, things hanging at the time, it doesn't take long for a body cam to grow.
The property runs into the jail, one ship comes on, there's just two body cams, there's two people upstairs, we gotta recharge it at some point. So there will be times during the shift, you didn't have access to a body cam because it was up open and recharging. And they turn theirs on every time they go upstairs.
Oh, we hope so.
Yes.
I don't think the board has uh made a decision on whether they're gonna use the A R, A R P money. But I know that every time, you know, they get roll out, well, we got the A R P money. I mean, if it's something that you leave for your apartment, it's okay to ask for it, but not to just assume that the A R P money. We have money over here on our kids.
The A R P money can be used for loss revenues. That's all but allocated for loss revenues, so that's not a concern, spending that.
Right.
But if you need something for your apartment, you have. It's not, we're not looking for reasons to spend that money.
No, I don't. It was, it was part of our intention that some of the parks have been utilizing that to upgrade that that.
You don't need to.
Is that true?
You may.
Ah, you said.
Oh, okay. They might have, you know what they gonna use it for.
Yes.
But if you need something for your apartment, you need something for the apartment.
Yeah.
And now you use it A R P money or tax money, for something you need some.
Well, I, I think since that, I mean, this is something they're gonna have to use. Maybe we should, you have to take this on the advice, maybe we can go ahead and purchase this. I mean, it's gonna be a need, yeah. I'm quite sure if it takes time to develop in two, but.
Two about thirty day period.
Thirty day time. I said, well, we can begin to build this. I got, that's motion.
Motion by supervisor Hutch, can you hear the second? Second by supervisor Gaines, any discussion? One question I have, how many current body cams do you have right now?
Do we have or in our operation?
Both.
In, in our operation, what difference if you have one, it's not an operation?
Well, it's, I, I didn't want to tell them that we have twenty-nine body cams, but we may have seven of them that are broke and we can't do anything with them. Um that I just, I didn't want to give you a false number.
We call that garbage.
Well.
How many do you have?
Once, I have some, it's about thirty-three, thirty-five. Because as I said, we've already up, we've already upgraded five or six to the body cam threes. We need a model that number that you have right there to fulfill the needs of you.
Okay. And you'll move the other ones into the jail, the twos?
Yes.
All in favor? All opposed? Uh.
The last thing on the project Noah, um they are waiting on us. So after all, they had a day, the quote, back to you, that they not go forward until they get a P M number, work check.
Francis for the other thing that we just did, I'll send you the invoice, you still gotta make sure it goes through. Purchasing. The body cams, still gotta go through purchasing the cam.
Right.
If it's a single source, it's a single source, but make sure.
Right, yes, this is a sole source.
We're just approving the amount.
So I'm just asking, while you are, can you go ahead and prove the scripture means that we're gonna use exion so they can be administered their sole source provider?
You heard the request.
Is it, is it a sole source provider?
Any exon?
Exon.
Plus, I mean, I thought that's who was gonna go to me anyway, so we didn't mention that.
I thought.
We have to make a determination it's a sole source provider before we can do it. That's why I told Francis to make sure the purchasing laws are not, are not violated.
So we didn't mention that.
And she's already done. We should.
Motion by supervisor. Second, we, 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 we use the one for what? The body cams are sold. Exon. There's not a.
I, I, I use the whole uh camera thing.
And I backed it up because I want to make sure Francis made, once you.
So we don't want you to buy the body cam.
That's right, to make sure that it's a sole source.
All in favor? All opposed? I said.
Uh no, get back to the camera, Noah's camera. William?
Yes, sir, y'all did approve it. However, um we just need to figure out where are the P M's come from or the check is come from. They're waiting on us now, so not coming out of sheriff's office budget. So whoever needs to contact them, we can put them in contact from the county, whether it's purchase anyone, the team or whoever. But that, that's what they're waiting on, they're waiting on us.
Who they need to contact you? Uh, well, they need to contact you, Mr. Gaines. We are, we know we approved it, uh probably no count. We approved, but what he said, now they trying to figure out, they ready for this, they just need to figure out, like they need to.
We approved, but what he said, now they're trying to figure out, they ready for this, they just need to figure out, like they need to figure out, so I'm just trying to figure out who they need to.
Yeah, it's not on the board's budget.
Yeah, come from our, but, no, come from our, but.
Sixty thousand, sixty thousand, sixty thousand.
Sixty thousand, so.
Too many of them.
So many of them.
And, sir.
Motion, my supervisor, motions, saying my supervisor, gains, any discussion?
No, I, no, no, we can care of that, but we still need to figure out, if him somebody, a contact man, normal, that we can give to the project, no, if he's still after you move, we can move forward. Don't care.
All in favor?
Ah, all opposed, I said. So you, you can, did you get contact? No, okay, so did you get contact?
So we should have everything, did you get that?
So basically, once we get the P O, you, and we get this in place, so you will start, they'll come on in and start installing Noah's camera, so you talk about, if you get the P O, sometimes we can talk about within the next thirty days, they have start installing.
The, the cameras that you do not have to build within thirty days, they should be here installed, and they said they don't take them along to build the whole cameras.
Yes.
Where they put in Kingston and, uh, the other locations.
Okay.
And before they install it, they'll have to be built and, and, uh.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so my question is, and I'm not real with Francis, that's why I ask this question. Even though Project Noah has given for pricing on these.
You are now in break house.
Is there a second quote because of the amount getting over five thousand? You know we have to have two quotes to satisfy the guidelines for the state.
I think this is only a sole source because of the services provided with the cameras and what they're, they're doing. I can, I'm almost apologize to the situation, that's what the city and everybody else have done, there, there isn't anybody else provides the service for the cameras.
And you're saying the service being them, of all that information that they track, or they have contracts.
Twenty-four, so.
Hey, you got a phone for us down there, huh?
How much of the service and how much of the camera, because if it's more than half, with the service and the service contract, we don't have to, you don't have to worry about that at all.
Well, the camera, uh, that.
Most of it is service, though, okay?
It is.
The key, Francis, is his decision.
So service is inside, sir.
The service, and they still work over that.
Okay, so I just wanna make sure that the board is right, because PJ is coming down, he calls it, don't show it. I said, Joe. I'm on the chair.
Uh.
No, that's good, chief.
We, we, uh, we gonna, uh, be in some, uh, the, uh, citizens and, uh, the road manager, I don't know if Scott's gonna be with us. We gonna do a ride on Cemetery Road, and by them having so much dumping and all that, oh, that, I don't know. That, I know you recommend that we put a camera on one end of Cemetery Road and a camera on the other end of Cemetery Road. So how easy would it be to add additional cameras to what we already have?
We haven't gotten the P O yet, we can have that back amended today, if, if you, if that's something. Well, and that's just it. Or you put it in someplace that has Wi-Fi service on both ends, and there's a low price of three hundred a camera, if you're having to do pole cams, it's seven hundred.
Yeah.
So let me ask you this question. So how far, uh, the Wi-Fi needs to, because I know somebody that on, on the Marley Inn, in a cemetery road, they live in them houses, that I could talk to to see can, uh, we utilize their Wi-Fi? So how far from, uh, the right eye, yeah, the right?
It's been on Wi-Fi. I mean, it's how or where their Wi-Fi broadcasts out, that will broadcast out into their yard, or just goes actual to the end of their house, because I've been having it on their house. But that has to depend on me.
Like, why don't we repeat your, uh, that.
Yeah, that, that's what I say, we can check all of it, I, but I wouldn't, I mean, we can do what we need, but I, because they don't be in the area installed. And if we can move forward with this, and why they install, we can, we can get a price and they can, and add it right on it.
I, I believe that.
Yeah.
Can I just make a recommendation, that we just amend the budget forward to twenty thousand to copper? What's meaning?
You heard the West County, Chris, right? Motion, my supervisor, gains, saying my supervisor, motions, any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed, I said.
I know y'all had a deal with the team, so I was actually pushing for you to come back to this, okay?
About Noah's camera?
Uh, no, well, no, it was, it was actually a lot of calls in the front.
Okay.
Do you all need to pay the bill here, or what with Enterprise, because what's happening right now is, have we tried to hold these cars and vehicles? Have we tried to hold these cars and vehicles there, they're selling them after COVID, we just like to hit last night. So I'm just asking, do you all need to pay this, as we know now, that the payment can only be the first of October? Or is the first, next year, and then get the vehicles?
I have a number for the first October.
Next four weeks?
Next four weeks, so I have answer for us.
Those are all, did you look at that, Francis, the Enterprise cars?
I don't, I understand.
That's not, that's not easy.
All of them got to be on state contract or whatever it is, or they could get it out, like you did before.
And as far as planning, just be allocated, that's it for now. The other thing is, we have a head of safety fair April thirteenth, at the safe room, maybe from ten to two, so if you all want to shoot eight in the right eye, that's fine. I know you're not gonna be able to do this other part of the business, I just want to be the holder.
Yeah, you know, there's one minute out.
Twenty-seven.
What's next?
The other thing is.
Good, no.
I did take that twenty minutes, too.
Ten o'clock.
Good morning, Alice County boys.
Good morning.
Hi, I'm Francis Babb, as you know, your purchase card body cam, and this is my last time doing this. So, welcome guys, we're open at the, um, bids for the six month supplies for the running product. And those bids are their lay down of asphalt, the asphalt price itself, then the contractor's mix, with the specification of the contractor's mix, as well as cobers. You put the cobers on the six month bid because of the price level. Uh, I have five bids open, and I'm going to start with AIPAC Mississippi. Okay, AIPAC also finished on those volumes. So their contractor's mix price per ton is eighty-five twenty. Their specification mix per ton is eighty-seven fifty. And their TAC code price per gallon is four dollars fifty cents. And they did not give a bid for the passion of the six inch street cut utility trench. They also gave a price from one inch to one and a half inch overlay. That overlay being fifty tons to two hundred tons of one forty-two per ton. And their one and one half inch to two inch overlay of a hundred forty dollars. They may have of the twenty, twenty to five hundred tons of one inch to one and a half inch, seventy-five dollars per ton. And the next respectively is seventy-three dollars per ton. Then we have the lay down price of five hundred tons above of forty-three dollars per ton, for the one inch to one and a half inch, and for the one and a half inch to two inch, the price of five hundred above, so we forty-one dollars per ton. They have a leveling price of a hundred ten dollars per ton, for the one inch to one and a half inch, they have a leveling price of a hundred dollars per ton, for one and a half inch to two inch overlay. They included their pricing for the one hundred square feet and above for passion four inches of seventy dollars. And their six inch, one hundred square feet above of seventy-five dollars. Okay, so that is the price from AIPAC Mississippi. Next, I'm gonna open up the bid for Hanson Construction LLC, which they're being on the same terms. Let's take that. Okay, so they're giving a price for their lay down of the hot mix asphalt. The price for lay down of fifty to two hundred tons of the one inch to one and a half inches, ninety-five dollars overlay price, of the one and one half inch to two inches, twenty-nine dollars per ton. For the lay down pricing of two hundred and one tons to five hundred tons, sixty-five dollars per one inch to one and a half inch, and fifty-five dollars per one and a half inch to two inch, for the lay down of tons, two hundred and one, of five hundred tons. And lastly, they have a price for their lay down, uh, overlay, they did not give a price for the five hundred, you know, above, five hundred and one tons above. And they did not submit a price for the surface force public contractors mix. That's how this is being on. Now, the next thing we have, and this I just want to leave the cobers. And we're gonna open up Southern Cobra first. All right, so they have a price for the heavy duty polyethylene price. And all these prices are good for September thirtieth, uh, this year. So this is, you know, an example of a couple of products, the, uh, diameter, diameter eight inches, the double wall of that heavy duty polyethylene price, high fee is priced at four dollars seventy-six cents. The bands for the eight inches and the double wall is gonna be twenty dollars. They have on here the price for the twelve inch single wall, it cuts, so it's seven dollars seventy-six cents per square feet. And those are just a couple of theirs.
If you, if you could get Corret to make a copy of that.
Yeah, we're gonna bring that in, we'll, and, um, that way, once I read these others, Robbie and I are gonna bring that to that. And we're gonna, um, also have to look over, put some, bring recommendations back in while you all are here. Okay, so their next pricing for Southern Cobra is. The galvanized steel pipe. And this is again, the Southern Cobra. And a twelve inch diameter, um, for the. Correct, the galvanized steel is gonna be twenty-two dollars, twenty-three cents for sixteen gauge, twenty-six dollars, sixty cents for fourteen gauge. Uh, they have a price for the, the thickness, quality prices, uh, the diameter of six inches, it's gonna be two dollars and thirty-one cents. The thirty-six diameter for the, um, for the same is gonna be thirteen dollars and forty-seven cents. And he has a notation, the band price is equal to the price of the pipe times two D. He also has a price on here for, uh, fifty-four inch, sixteen gauge, um, galvanized pipe, a hundred twenty dollars and twenty-seven cents. And that's just an example of some of the items that he has listed. But these will all be reviewed and compared to the other. So that's what this girl White is saying. Next, we have, we have the price for G N O supply, and they have a price for their plastic and their metal cobers in here.
Where are they from?
I think G N O is out of, uh, up north, because they were always coming in once, so many days ahead of notice. No, I'm wrong, they're up in Southsia, Mississippi, I thought they were in another state, but they have a location in Southsia, Mississippi. And that is G N O Supply Company. So, but they are metal cobers. They have twelve, um. Okay, so the twelve fifteen inch seventeen by thirteen, for the sixteen gauge, galvanized brown, it's gonna be twenty-four dollars seventy-two cents. The arch is gonna be twenty-seven nineteen. Um, they also have a twelve, no, a fifteen inch, um, diameter for a different size, I don't know if it's the same price for the corrugation. But they have fourteen gauge, um, thirty dollars and ninety cents, and then for the arch, it's gonna be thirty dollars and ninety cents. And that's the prices for their metal cobra. And they also submitted their price for their plastic cobers. For their eight inch plastic cobra, the eight inch diameter gives a price of four dollars eighty-six cents. And then they have the A S T M pipe, it's going to be four dollars sixty-two cents, and that's with a linear foot, and coting at twenty dollars per unit. So, that was them, so Robbie and I and, uh, Chris, we're gonna all take these under advice, and we'll be back in short to be the regulations and the copies for page ten for.
Chris, I have a question, uh, I'm conscious for you, uh, when is your last day?
It is April twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
And why do you say it's your last meeting?
No, I don't think I have anything for the next meeting, because this was a big ass lot of for this one.
Okay, I don't, you have me confused, like you can leave now?
No, no, you can't do it with that exactly.
She's seriously sad about it, doesn't she?
I think she does.
Uh, I'm, 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 I'm gonna make a motion that we do a resolution.
Yeah.
We can?
You're very bad.
That's all right. Thank you, I'll see you guys again.
All right, good morning again, boys, um, I appreciate you all's time and the lack of you all in town, and y'all a little bit more, and not coming to damn anybody's spirit, but you are. But I do wanna say that I appreciate you all letting us go for a independent, um, review of situation concerns in jail. The reason why I asked for that review to be done is not because I just wanna shine you four, but I wanted somebody who didn't have any doubt in the fight, or whether we build one, outsourced, or, or anything at all concerning how it's coming to jail. So if y'all are mine, I'd like to bring up Ms. Captain Bryant, and let her.
Bring me that open session.
And let her talk about her report.
This is in the same.
Yeah, we'll, we'll defer that.
I wanna do an executive session.
No, let's do it in the hall.
You wanna do an open session?
Executive session issue?
Hey, if you're gonna talk about the security and safety of the jail and the potential liability of inmates.
That means executive?
It could qualify.
I said, we need file, we need file, whether it's, we, we, we need file, then we qualify for executive session, and now if you don't qualify, then we need to do it in open.
What are you?
That is.
What are you? What, what are you?
It's a, it's a session of the jail, it's gonna be considered, it's gonna be, uh, it's an issue, it's an operational function out of the jail's security, it's gonna have several things in it.
Is he gonna discuss liability of the cameras? You're gonna discuss security of the jail?
It is.
Those, those are qualified. But you don't have to, you know.
I don't, I don't have a problem doing that, because it is what it is, so whatever side I'm facing.
What you, what you think is best, I mean, both of them, I don't know, you, everybody.
You said close determination, and I can determine what you wanna go into or not.
Do you suggest that we were in close determination?
Absolutely, just have a little determination, then you can. Absolutely, just have a little determination, then you can decide what you're gonna do executive or not. Is that all you have?
That's it.
Any other following reports?
Oh, there you go.
I have two boarders this morning. Both are kind of my father, but kind of not my father. The rock shop. He uh purchased a used. Ceramic cutting machine or something, and I put the wrong tiles on it. And so he brought me the uh invoice on it this other day. And so I was wanting to drop his assessed value from fifty-three thousand to fifty-one thousand to twenty-seven thousand. The actual loss for us would be thirty-eight hundred dollars.
You heard the question? Thank you, most of you. Much my thanks again, say my thanks, Rob, if you have any discussion.
My own discussion is when you say you got the wrong amount. So you guessed it, uh you gotta tell him you do the wrong amount or what?
I possibly got a fake deposit memo.
So there's two ways that you do your assessment. All opposed?
The second is Pete's subject service. I think he um evidently she was a U C P A. And when she registered, she she registered everything right and I picked up everything I thought was right. And it had tank on there. So I put a tank on road, come to find out it's a truck. It says uh tanker truck. So that's been a loss of two thousand dollars.
Much my thanks again, say my thanks, Rob, if you have any discussion. All in favor? All opposed, I say.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. Oh, something's there. Alright, supervisor Gray?
Uh. I know I saw it, but I'm just shocked that uh. U N C is no longer a legitimate provider for Blue Cross commercial help. I mean, they sent me a uh letter, cause I had some service done up there, so I guess I won't be. Uh going in no more, they're gonna take our insurance.
Probably still cheaper, even if they're out of line. We can ask Fred, and I think, you know, Fred, see if that's actually gone into effect yet, you know, they play chicken off a lot. U N C and Blue Cross Blue Shield, there's probably a cutout date of when they stop. Or when they'll start being out of network providers and whatnot, I'll ask Fred to tell us what that exactly.
Um. My friend, uh well, grab to uh our volunteer firefighter, uh Mr. Johnny Mayberry, uh I know him personally, he a great young man. I pray that everything worked out for him. And uh. So I have a abandoned house on fourteen Prince of Getch Road. And uh. I got some pictures and everything, and I think it's packed up. It's following in the vibe, and I got a couple complaints about that. And you say y'all already dealt with Southview Drive, because it's getting worse, it's not getting any better.
I've asked for a full cost to have that cleaned, I asked again today. And then Robbie and I are gonna get to the share to move the cars, we can move already. Some of them aren't even moved, but some are back.
Yeah, they were moved and moved and backed.
Okay, then he ain't got the message.
Well, it's gonna take, given a quote, go to the Secretary of State.
Not not by road?
Now, I'm not talking about for the property.
I'm actually sending somebody out there now.
Okay, where are we at with the Secretary of State?
We need a cost to from around New Haven, yes, sir.
And then we send it to the Secretary of State?
And they then look at that and evaluate whether whether, you know, it may need a prying, the profferment to the county.
I think we need to get that contest made today, man, because these people don't deserve to go through what they do.
Absolutely. I agree.
And uh I wish everybody would have been looking at. I ain't never seen nothing like this in my whole life since I've been elected.
And I've been there, I've been there a few times, and you're absolutely right, you go down the road, it's a normal open road, and then about all the way to the end turns into a totally different. Yeah. Lot of whatever, it's like. It belongs to the state of the Pacific from paying taxes, and that's the issue that we have. Yeah.
Uh, we did have a meeting uh with the N W S C P, and I think it was a success. The way they did it, they kinda uh taught us in groups and group got together and came up with some ideas on how to deal with black. How to deal with terrorism, and how to deal with workforce uh development. And they're gonna keep on having these uh meetings, and I think it's a great idea. And uh I have a top rack on eleven Bark Road. In thirteen Merle Drive, same property, we always deal with stuff. Well, the weather is changing and that rack is just tremendous, so.
And it's probably within a year of the. I'll look at that and see, you might as well go ahead and just stick signs and put it.
And. Uh, as y'all know, the young man that was fishing in the bank cave then on uh Mr. Katri, I had with him was a friend of mine. Thank God, he was able to call nine-one-one and and get him out of there, and he got him, and took him to a hospital. I think I talked to him on the phone, I think he told me he had a broke leg and a broke hip. So he craned from Harris, Katri Harris and his family. And uh I found out the other day that uh Mississippi minority uh caucus director had a stroke. And uh last I heard, he was in a hospital, and he's doing pretty good, Andrew Smith. And uh last, I have uh. My condolences goes up to the Green family, the Nelson family, the Carmel family, the Darrell family, the Nelson family, the Washington family. The Gray family, which is, I I I don't guess they related to me, but we we been overplaying each other over the phone, so. And uh another thing that uh. He had a mobile detail service. And uh, I think he's still in the ground, I'm not sure, but he was off top of the church.
John Fakes.
And he was kinda cleaning the church up and fell from off top of the church. My tendency goes out to his family, but he died too. And. Uh, I know he not gonna have nothing but his widow or something, he did not. Um. I was listening to this pastor, and he said, that's why I always wear this hat on my head, y'all. He said, you need to protect your head. Head speaks to leadership, head speaks to government. Most people are living from their heart and not their head. And I said that for a reason, when we make decisions in the county, we make tough decisions. And we we cannot be in our emotions and our feelings about the decision that was best for the county than we should be in our head. And that concludes my report.
Two by the rules.
Uh the first thing I wanna bring up is uh the applications for the youth program, the summer program that we have. I just wanna let you all know that we begin with the start there, and we'll take applications up until April the third. So this is what the program wants to do, so the college kids get out of school. So I'm asking everybody to just let there to be until uh how people submit applications to the board. And the ages are, the ages are sixteen to twenty-four, as long as they're in high school or college. You have a question, of course, okay, alright. The next thing is um. Supervisor Wilson, you kept off this uh. To the board last meeting about the gate across uh Wickerson Road. Obviously, there's some that owns, plus the um a person that owns uh property down here, he owns about five hundred and forty some acres down here. Uh he also got a fund cap down there, and he have uh people going in and out of that property to hunt. And they not um. They don't wanna do this.
Citizen's passport, opposing petition.
Yes.
Thought they covered all the bases.
But they have to go through there to get to that property. So uh and they not on this list, don't wanna contact him or anything. So they not even reading with this until they talk with that uh property owner. Cause I mean, he has more property back there than anybody.
Supervisor Wilson, if you can talk to him and let me know wh- whether they wanna draw their petition or not, it probably not. Anything can happen, but if one of the landowners must keep it, typically those type of petitions have failed and passed, so. They wanna proceed on it, let me know, just they got a petition and title, have hearing on it.
What's my name?
Uh Mr. Joseph Gettlers. And he has more than that than him. He has five hundred and some acres.
But let me know, and I'll let you know, Angel, if they wanna proceed, still have to do the hearing, but you had a land dispute.
Okay, um then uh I'd like to Johnny Mayberry, I also like to send my prayers out to him. I grew up with him, I knew him as a baby, he stayed right across from my father, so we grew up together. Um so I want to definitely send my prayers out to him. I knew his parents, you know, everything. He was right across the street from my father, I would. Um another thing is, Mr. George Bates, I also wanna send my sympathy out to him. Uh he did live in the ranch, and um when I heard about it, I, you know, was sad to hear that. You know, he was off top of the church and he was there on the church and, you know, passed away, so I do wanna send my sympathy out to him. And I think that's all.
Okay, I have a couple of questions for Robbie, but I'll I'll get with him after the meeting. I would like to say we got another storm coming in in the morning, I guess, um. Two weeks ago, the storm came in, blew a lot of trees across every road, I happened to be in the middle of that. It was cutting them out of the way, and I got things cut out of the way. People almost ran to get over them, cause they had somewhere they had to be. Uh people didn't learn to slow down, it does uh does guys that work for a living are in danger all the time. And I just, please use more caution, have a little patience when that's being done, because the local lines down a lot of times, so. Is danger? Sir?
Next is B?
Oh yeah. That's us, yes, that's in my court.
Uh well, uh piggyback, obviously, I was hustling and supervisor Gray, but my heartfelt sentiment goes out to the Mayberry family, I do know him. Uh know him personally, had known for a while, he's one of those hardworking volunteer firefighters that, I mean, every storm that we've been since I've been here. It hasn't been one that he hadn't been on the road this night or that, he 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 was a dedicated uh volunteer fi- uh firefighter. But am I, everybody else also has sympathy, because the world has got a lot going on right now, and uh on a daily basis. But uh to my people on State Park, the engineers wasn't here, that wanted to um. Get an update on State Park, we're all over things are working that are, so if you hold on a little more, that uh that'll be there. And to my folks on Morgantown, we are still working, we are waiting on actually how the money will be there after the past. And they are waiting on to figure out how they're gonna spur for money. We was in a meeting on Friday of last week. I think, yeah, Friday, and so it has in the past, and we are uh moving forward, trying to uh get plans, so y'all hold on, we still working. Uh and so we'll be pushing forward as soon as these farms come down to probably start construction date uh as soon as possible. Supervisor Gang, why we saying something about Morgantown Road, uh what he's done, we still need that update cost, how much actually costs.
Yeah.
The new cost.
That's what I said.
Scott, can you uh?
George's already commented on, I thought he commented on that, he was waiting on something.
He ain't taking that much. But no, we still need that update cost, on how much it's gonna cost actually with Morgantown Road.
Yes, sir.
No, you did, you did right, that's why I said.
I thought I'd heard him say that, he's gonna get on that, so that's that's my mistake, I was I was asking. We had a meeting, Ricky and I did with constituents about litter in general, and I think when we talked about it. One of the things that we had talked about was maybe making a more push, public push about our convenience stations when they're open, hours of operation, that kind of thing. Cause a lot of these uh garbage items are big items, people aren't sure what to do with, like it's their couches. You know, some white goods, that kind of stuff, and our convenience stations, that's part of the reason that we have them, is to try to deal with that type of uh of waste. And then they're open on the weekends, unless I'm mistaken, they're open on the weekends, and and that was the thing, is like, why do you have them on the weekends when people do them on it? And I answered, well, they are, so. I think when Ricky and I talked about it, it would be real beneficial if we push that out there, that if you don't know where, if you got an old sofa, you don't wanna take it. That's why we have these convenience stations, you can also go to the actual landfill in uh at Greenway, I guess is what they're called now, and. And you can drop them off there if you're a county resident, you're doing a residential, not not your construction, construction company can't do it. If you're residential, you can actually go to the landfill yourself, and you can dump it there as well, so. This type of stuff, you don't know what to do with it, don't put it in the bayou, put it where it's supposed to go. And I think that we can look at pushing that and and maybe do a newspaper ad, or or get it out there, if we can talk to some people. You know, maybe have it ready, or just say, hey, guys, we got this out there. Just let us know where you have it off.
Okay, let me say this to a uh turn slow. I think one time we discussed this here about that same issue, about the refrigerators counters and stuff like that. We did say, I was uh, the road that you Bobby was in here, there's a certain check, that they can't put it out in front of their uh house, and they will pick it up.
Town may for that boy. You're right about that.
So we did discuss that one time before, so if you talk to Bobby, he does have a day, that they do come out and do that, because I have had the schedule as to do that, and they have come out, and they they to pick it up.
Well, yeah, like, we could get that, all that information together, number one, have it for sanitation department, two, so if people call and ask. You know, she can have all that information there, get it to the newspaper, maybe ask the radio stations to do a public service announcement on it, really start pushing. Cause a lot of that, people are just looking, well, what are they gonna do with this stuff, and they don't know what to do, so. You know, that could be a good, a good thing to to do, and if it, you know, I think. Cemetery Road, since that's a, you know, it is in Ricky's district, but that's a road, very kind of recreational, most people will that road driving down and so forth. Uh really seeing what we can do, maybe we can purpose of some of this litter, I mean, we've, since I've been here, since, you know, and you know, since you're on the board. We tried what we can to do, it not really had the effect that we wanna do, but all of y'all wanna get rid of that that litter and garbage on it. All these stuff, if anything, can happen.
Listen, Trey, I I I think some of these areas like that, once we get that load of camera and 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 put a fee on it, and people actually have consequences for people doing something like that. That's the only way you're gonna see it different, and people stop dumping on the side of the road, once we, word of mouth, I mean, new thing be one thing. But word of mouth, if if we told something different, probably the same people doing it, and they gonna buy it, don't do that, man, I gotta sign home or dial out a ticket. We got the fan, uh I I mean, I wish we could take it out, but we we gotta put a ticket on these things.
In my mind, if you're packing up your truck, you're packing up a U-Haul or whatever, you're gonna take it somewhere. You know, if you know that there's a location that you can take it, why wouldn't you, and there's not just one, there's several locations you can take it, three of them, why wouldn't you just take it to that location? As opposed to dumping on where they're not making that much more, it's twenty minutes to get anywhere. You know, it's can't really, you know, like that's, anyway, I think, but I think you definitely have consequences, have alternatives.
The picture y'all just passed around, that's a perfect example of, it looked like somebody done remodeled the house, just copped it up too. The old wood out and just dumped it wherever it's at. And now we got to use our grant money to go clean up a legal dump site where somebody had dumped it. That's just don't even make no sense, man.
And it affects us a lot when it comes to these E W Ps, for whatever reason, they're attracting for, you know, these E W Ps. It also probably just throwing like this, the big problem with doing that is when you litter, it does affect your erosion in a negative way. It, it escalates to the speed of erosion. So that affects your path, cause now when you're cleaning and grugging, that's part of their estimate, oh my gosh, I don't have to pull this, that and the other out of that and don't know what's in it, so.
Yeah, actually, I'm doing A's now, man, I'm going to town, I used to go there and dig and every time find the address and then make them, you know, whoever the address you find, then they get fucked, so coming back over there and getting that crap up.
Johnny, go ahead, sir.
I know there are some consequences, the sheriff, we talked about this and I actually watched what the sheriff is doing also. If you see them dumping, all you have to do is get their car tag and the sheriff will go out and, uh, find that person and ticket, you know, give them their own ticket. So that's something he has already done so far, so that's another thing that we later. And also like Supervisor Gray say, if you find a ticket, you can make them go out and clean it up and if not, we can find for it. You know, and most of the time, there is an address in those kind of, uh, dump sites and places.
So anyway, that, that's something that if board's okay, we'll try to get all that information together and get that over to, to everybody, including criminal side of it and your alternatives, if you do it the right way, you don't have to worry about it. You know, but it's just an ongoing problem, we can't handle it. We met on Friday, there was a couple of projects that Natchez Peak asked that we make an application for. The application's due in mid-April. Basically, there's one for improvement, economic improvement on our rail, and there's an improvement for economic, uh, on our port. Um, does anyone have any thoughts on it, can we tell them, you know? My thoughts are already up, or you should pick one, that's what we asked for, just pick one. We don't need port. It might be good, cause port is what makes us unique, not that we don't need the rail, and that's good too. Um, that would be my suggestion, unless y'all feel strongly one way to go.
The port, I suggest the rail.
So I'll see y'all, can you do a motion on it?
Motion.
Second.
Motion, Supervisor Gray, second, Supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out.
Okay, and with the, I guess, gave an update with most of the E W Ps on Cemetery Road. We did have a good discussion with them, they did, after we discussed some things, did say that they would sign. So I believe that group three is going to be ready to go within the next day or so. I think the, the news will get it, the news, not the newspaper, but that's a thing, we'll get it signed and, and ready to go for group three. Um, group two. I think I'm waiting, I have gotten an indication that they're going. Make sure I'm telling all of y'all right. So I'm sorry, so group two is Cemetery Road, they indicated they're going to sign. The other, uh, landowner has indicated that he's going to sign on, it's Old Highway Eight, Ward Number Three. So those should be ready to go within the next couple of days. Group three, I believe is all that's signed, yes. So group three is ready to go, so if y'all would like to, uh, forward those contracts and we'll do the notice of intent to, uh, you know, proceed, you know, once we have the remaining right ways file for group two and three.
Any motion?
Yes.
Much, Supervisor Gray, second, Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out.
I think that was it. Am I asked about else, I think?
Uh, Supervisor Gang, it's, it's on.
I just something I forgot, there's something that we would put out, but bored. I remember, um, at one time we did have a, a trash crew and I don't know exactly what happened or why, but it, uh, it's kind of dismembered, but as we sit here and take our track reports and as we look, uh, maybe we might need to think about, you know, going next budget season. You, you got a, you got a strong need for somebody that will be busy every single day, that we had somebody to go tracking. I don't know what was maybe after the meeting or sometime y'all can give some history on why y'all didn't. I think that's something that we can consider to, uh, open that back up because the sheriff, I do call, when I call, they try to get it. But it's just overwhelming with garbage, um, every road, so I think that is a need that we need to consider to restart, uh, rehire some people to just do that, and I promise you, they won't, this they did.
Well, I think that Supervisor Gang was a, um, director of litter, that's what we had and we just.
Solid waste enforcement.
Yeah, solid waste testing, of course, but it wasn't a crew. He was just a person that go out and find these areas, like those, uh, yard signs and stuff like that, yeah.
I was actually, I remember at one time they should pick up, I think, from my secretary in the studio. They should go out and they should have a truck, they should pick up the litter.
No, that's a year ago.
Yeah, it was.
Trying to take you, you did it yourself.
Yeah, but, uh, but I just put it on the ground, it's good. Yeah, well, uh, I think, uh, I know.
It's been a while, it's long, it's not.
The preacher, he's.
Still a bunch.
No, I, I sent it calling, it's a preacher, so they had, they had to pick up, hey.
They had, but it was no purpose.
Yeah.
Our best, our best. We can't give you the work for the road department that time. Can't get there and it happens only to another day.
Yeah.
Ms. Wilson?
I just have one item, we sent out the first round of the notices from the Department of Revenue and who said charge backs. Um, we did receive back four objections, um, as well as Glenda went through and located eight properties that sold during dependency of when the notices were issued and said that the new owners should not have notices, we need to have that removed. Um, would y'all like me to read the names of the objectors and the others?
Yeah.
So we received four objections, one is from Charlene Carol Green. The second one is from Charles Craig Goddall. The third is from Janice Moore and we received a fourth one from Judy Green. And generally, it's been, of course, for the board, just to go ahead and forward those on to the Department of Revenue to have them take a second look and then they will provide us with our back and then I'll present a response back to the board, um, go see if that, I can do that or.
You need a motion for that?
Please.
Check. Motion, Supervisor Wilson, second, Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed, eyes out.
Uh, the only thing I have, just an announcement, is that we, um, have started sending out via mail and sheriff's notices the first time of the notice for tax redemption for twenty nineteen, back year. So property owners out there, you will be getting correspondence from the change report office, um, it will be certified, may also get a green card. Uh, please do, uh, get that notice, if you have any questions, you can call our office at six oh one four four six 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 eight four. And we also have our constables serving those notices this year, so either Willie James or Randy for the state of the sheriff's offices.
Got a motion for a review?
All right, now come to me, I have a request for travel for, uh, Janice Lee and Diddy. April tenth through April thirteenth, let me show her mileage, meals and hotel. Motion by Supervisor, next. Function, second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
You think, what, what did they?
April tenth through April thirteenth. Next, I have a letter from Mississippi Association of Supervisors requesting client help at the conference of June twelfth through June seventh, tenth. And I have her request for travel. Next, motion by Supervisor Hutchins, second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out. Okay. Next, I have a new hire for Council Seagull Clerk, it has been signed fourteen fifteen hour, her name is Carrie Smith. Any motion? Motion by Supervisor Gray, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed. We have two, two new hires for juvenile detention congressional officers, uh, one is Kim Singleton, second is Marcus Chapman. Hourly rate twelve dollars, annual rate twenty four nine sixty, both have been signed. Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, and then second by Supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed, eyes out. Next, we have a new hire as Deputy Clerk, Justice Court. Uh, T F Ls, hourly rate twelve dollars, annual rate twenty four nine sixty, as inside. Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All right, all opposed, eyes out. Lead board's approval for a letter of support, this is for the Alphabell Supervisor, the firm supports city and has to missle workforce training program application. This will be in twenty twenty one. Any other motion? Motion by Supervisor Hutchins, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion?
Look, look at that.
Letter of support for workforce training program. All in favor?
All right.
All opposed, eyes out. I would just like to echo on, uh, Mr. Bradford, when we spoke about storm closures, you know, I, I had young children and I, I understand in the past how difficult it can be on families when this happens. Uh, but it's a lot harder to make that decision when you sit at the station and you go through those calls and this kid makes calls on the shut down of county. And, uh, we had a prime example, just a little bit across the river last week, last week, you know, storm, uh, tornado across the Little Academy and tore that school apart. Thank God those children weren't in school. So, you know, I, I, I know it's scary, I know sometimes it's hard, uh, it's better to be safe. And I can assure you, if you ever re-sold, if something happened, you would not be happy about that either. So, um, just please have faith in the fact that, that Mr. Bradford does his homework and, and, and board here and board across the city, do their research and, and try to do what's right for our school. Uh, oh, we did again on our bond, see what we have on that. I think we were waiting on, uh, yeah, did that, did you ever get any call on that, Ricky?
We, right.
The folks on the, uh, equipment, I love this person, I have a hand to my heart, I don't have a third phone, I'm like.
Well, back up on, yeah, you know, that's, um, he didn't back back to him though. Uh, he had, uh, well, I'm sure he had that, me, uh, he's like, thank you, Greg, trying to get a contact with him. And, uh, to see, I, I was trying to get some folks and I, I had, Diana was also a bit supposed, but, uh, tried to surround about number. And, uh, on, uh, the ring with, uh, some social practice, foreign number, so he didn't process it, he got somebody out there looking at it. But I think he was trying to get him in my Friday, I didn't have him trying to get him in my Friday, but I don't, he didn't get back with me, so I'm not sure. But we, we worked on it, we did work on it.
This is the same person? This, that's a different person?
No, 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 this, this is my person, we, we just trying to get a hard number.
We got to wait for.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we got, like, next week, like, next meeting, but we.
I believe you're some different, well, a part person.
I mean, it's like, it was just a bad, it was a part question, I said it was set forth, yeah, we don't set, that's a whole fault.
I'm gonna wait a motion next thing, so. Oh. I believe that's all I had, uh, Ms. Parker, did you have something?
Yes. All right. Yes. Can you hear me? Like, there's been a lot of news and Scott just emailed me a long ago about U M and C not signing a contract that's going across their shoes. Uh, every few years, a hospital comes up and there's a battle between some insurance company in that hospital and their reimbursements. Uh, frankly, me and all the other agents I stay in contact with have been shocked that this has gone this far. Uh, but if to try to give, uh, people a level of comfort, this is how it works. You can imagine since Blue Cross, right, sixty percent or more of the health insurance written in the state and the city. How many hundreds of people each week, maybe thousands go to U M and C that have Blue Cross insurance? Well, there's a form that they will get you to sign, a U M and C called a non-network provider written direction of payment. Now, let's suppose I were to go to U M and C and I needed golf bags or, that's a seventy five, eight thousand dollars or, uh, well, that's the pill amount, that's not the allowance. And let's say that U M and C did not get me to sign this letter, Blue Cross would send that money to me. So it's in the best interest, of course, of U M and C to make sure that when you go there, that they, you sign a written direction of payment, so when they file their claim with Blue Cross, then Blue Cross sends a check to them. Now, that being said, both the legislature of Mississippi and there's also a federal law preventing balance billing and surprise billing. So what does that mean? That means that if you go to U M and C, you sign this letter, Blue Cross pays them. It's under the law, all you're responsible for is your deductible and dental insurance. They can't surprise bill you for balance billing. Now, uh, having never personally been through that process? I don't know, uh, but if the agent of the county, uh, if an employee is, if the, when this go, when somebody goes through this and of course, I'm up there, uh, back and call, help them work this out. But, uh, it is, uh, scary, um, you know, if you're going, you're going to go up it. I'm sure when you get the letter from U M and C or you've got the letter from Blue Cross about what's going to happen. Well, what will happen is, I am certain U M and C is going to get you to sign this written direction of pay because why wouldn't? They don't want Blue Cross to send a check to you. So, uh, with that being said, I've been, uh, myself and other agents I stay in contact with have been very surprised that this is not going to go off at this point. So that's, that explanation, uh, of course, uh, what it comes down to is U M and C being in the big hospitals in the state versus Blue Cross being the largest insurance state and they're battling over payments. And, uh, if an employee and, and whether they're gobbled over or not, when employees have a problem, they do call, they know where I am and they come see me. So, uh, hopefully this will be resolved rather quickly. The last time this happened, it was, uh, at a hospital on the coast and, uh, it got lucked out. And I feel certain that this will be worked out, but if any employees do run into a problem, you know, I'm going to encourage all the, uh, departments to have a call and see what, see what I can do to help. And a lot of people want to wear that balance billing and surprise billing law, you know, and this is what happens and this has been going on for years. Nine percent of the problems that I run into with claims, when I boil it down and tear it apart, is the billing department of a provider, because these big hospitals, they don't have internal billing anymore. It's not like when. It's not like when any one of you and I used to go, twenty years ago, we go to the doctor, they do all their billing out of their office. Now they hire third-party billing services to get paid by how much money they bring in. These billing companies don't care whether you've already paid that and you, and you lost your receipt and all this. They, they just go strictly by what they see and they will pound you to death unless you get in there and figure it out. And so, uh, for instance, one of the big things that where this really reared its head probably fifteen years ago, hospitals, there were so many lawsuits with anesthesiologists. Because anesthesiology is a, is a place where a lot of bad things can happen. And there were a lot of lawsuits. So what happens? Hospitals started telling anesthesiologists, you're no longer an employee of X Y Z hospital. And we're gonna pay you as an independent contractor. So these anesthesiologists said, well, heck, I'm not gonna sign my contract with, you know, healthcare or Blue Cross or et cetera, et cetera. I'm just gonna send a bill. Well, we all know, any of us has been to the hospital. When you go, you get a bill from the lab, a different lab, an anesthesiologist. You get a bill from some doctor you've never heard of, et cetera. The, the surprise billing law, the balance billing law, those laws were written protect the consumer from you going to X Y Z hospital and say, I got Blue Cross for two years. Do you take it? Well, they take every insurance. They say the little girl, or the young man at the desk there. They all say, yeah, we take it. But the question is, are you in that work or out of that work? That's the real question. So a lot of people would go, and this happened to me, a personal experience. I had a colonoscopy at Aaron Hospital. It was a, well, this is a colonoscopy. I go in and the next thing I know, I get a bill for three thousand eight hundred dollars from an anesthesiology group that I've never heard of. And I see a lot of bills and I just might, I'll see a lot of people's bills I've never heard of. And a friend of mine was the anesthesiologist that day. And I called up and I said, hey, this is the bill now. You haven't filed this with Blue Cross? And I checked, I pulled up on my personal Blue Cross site and the bill never, it didn't show up. It didn't show up, didn't show up. And I called this anesthesiology group and I said, you need to file this. And I kept looking and this is months I'm talking about. Finally I called Blue Cross, I said, well, they haven't filed this, it was a partner. By law, if they don't file it, you don't have to pay them. And I never paid that three thousand eight hundred dollars. And that's the first time in my life that I have not paid it. But I wasn't gonna pay the entire three thousand eight hundred dollars, which wasn't what I owed. If they would file a claim, I might owe them a thousand? Twelve hundred, eight hundred, I don't know. But they never filed a claim. So y'all all know that I'm on, not even on Chittis Street, so many employees run into a problem, they know where to find them. And I know that insurance commissioner, there runs into a problem there. I know who's calling, the legal department, et cetera, et cetera. But it is my hope that rather quickly that this conundrum will be resolved. Uh, I don't see how these two parties can't come to some conclusion through the center.
Thank you, Fred.
All right, yeah, it's okay. Yeah.
Mr. Fred, uh, I got a matter, uh, I'm looking at it right now from, um, you, U N M C. I think of, uh, when you mentioned that, uh, how you break it down to have somebody else send you a bill for the total amount. So about any chance, uh, these people send you a bill for the total amount? Then once you go to paying on the total amount, get a files with your insurance and they getting paid twice?
Yes, happens all the time. I, I see it, uh, all the time.
But, but here go my kids. First time I don't send them a payment, then, then, then I'm got, I got a collection agency calling me and telling me that I owe so and so, so and so. So I can't even live and they don't even send me a bill.
Well, they, they're not supposed to. But you and I both know when it comes to collections, uh, and what a collection company can do legally and what it does do are frequently two separate things. And, uh, when I, when this board, well, board a few years ago hired me, we had an employee who had been tripped over a plastic motorcycle at Christmas and needed stitches. And he, and that was around Christmas. The next year, he kept getting this bill and he kept saying, why aren't, you know, this bill's way too much? They had filed that accident as a motorcycle accident. And were requiring, Blue Cross due to code, thought he needed to sign what's called a subrogation form. Because they thought it was a motorcycle accident. And this went on with it. This has been going on way over a year when he came to me. And it was a bill for three thousand five hundred dollars, something like that. And they sent, they filed subpoenas and I went to court with them over here at Justice, at the Justice Court. And I, I had all the documentation and I told Joe's mother, I said, this man wasn't in a motorcycle wreck. I said, this man probably owes five hundred dollars. But merit will not do their job and file a claim properly. Why don't you, the city is, should he pay three thousand because the hospital did their job and she threw the, the thing out? So sometimes, I mean, it is a conundrum and it's hard and it's, uh, and sometimes you just, you just have to get me involved and, and see if I can help.
Yeah, they'll, they'll argue that it's sure as constantly ultimately filed the insurance carrier. And that's, and be, if you're a vendor, you got a duty to mitigate your expenses.
There, before, before he goes, one more question. You know, we got a lot of spam calls on my phone, I get them all the time. So, uh, does merit help send you something, uh, like a, a text message telling you how much you owe and to a website that you can pay and all this kind of stuff? I ain't, I mean, what a bill that.
I know that you can pay the bills online, but they should be mailed a bill also. It shouldn't just be out of the blue, a, um, a tech, I, I don't know. That's new to me, I've never heard of that. You know, I hear something here and that, uh, but, um, I don't know. And, you know, if you've got something going on there, let me know and I'll, I'll dig into it and see what I can find out. But, um, that's where ninety percent of my time spent, uh, working on claims is trying to get providers to file them properly. With the proper code, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Sometimes it's just, it's like bugging against the wall. But that being said, uh, if you wanna come, uh, bug your head against my wall and we can help you, but ahead then, um, there are home streets for you and we'll see what I can do.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, real quick, uh, I've just, not you, but, um, lead board approval signed on the, uh, Adams County, it was previous enough, Adams County has been preliminaryly approved for a grant in the amount eighteen thousand three hundred seven dollars and sixty six cents. This is the, uh, here is the bill. Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out. Also I have a shift captain for dispatch, is that right?
Yeah.
Um, Terrence Brown, hourly rate twelve sixty, annual rate twenty six two oh eight.
So.
Motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out. Ms. Franklin?
We were able to, uh, hook it all the bids back into that earlier. And I wanted to give you all the recommendations for the six month, um, bids for the Adam County Road Department. Now I have this roughly written out page, I'm gonna give you that, but I'll submit you a.
Okay.
Okay. Um, for the contractors mix per ton, A P A C. For the specifications mix per ton, A P A C. For the tack coat, it's gonna be A P A C. For the lay down of asphalt from fifty to two hundred tons, one inch to one and a half inch. And the one and a half inch to two inches, I'll be hands to construction. The lay down of asphalt from two hundred and one tons to five hundred tons. With that being the same, um, inches, the one inch to one and a half inch or the one and a half inch to two inch, also handsly. For the lay down of five hundred and one tons and above, for the one inch to one and a half inch. For the one inch to one and a half inch and then the one and a half inch. The one and one and a half inch to two inches, it's gonna be A P A C. For the patching of four inches and six inches, it's gonna be A P A C. For the metal pipe, I'm sorry, for the plastic pipe, it's gonna be Southern Cobra. Now with the plastic pipe, Southern Cobra and G and O Supply had the same price on everything. But because Southern Cobra is local and is a better fifty dollar product, I recommend we do Southern Cobra. For the metal pipe, G and O Supply did have a little, you know, less price than Southern Pipe. But because of the instance where it's the road department, I got a road open and they got a Cobra in place. And them not, them having to prolong the time to get their Cobra placed could cause a national to county resident or someone traveling their road. I recommend that we go with, um, Southern Pipe again because it's not but a couple dollars in difference in prices for the different, you know, Cobras and everything with the metal pipes. But I just recommend Southern Cobra because it's not a long turnaround time.
Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gray, any discussion?
Uh, one question I have, now you say A P A C is Blaine?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor? All right, all opposed, eyes out.
Thank you very much.
Now I believe I may have a motion for closed termination. Motion by supervisor Dan, second by supervisor Gray.
Did we have public comment?
No, no, we did not do a public comment. Any public comment? No. Uh, all in favor, uh, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out.